Good evening, and welcome to the May 6th City Council Meeting here in the City of Mesa. We'd like to excuse Mayor Giles and Councilmember Kevin Thompson, they're out of town for business. We're going to begin our meeting this evening with a moment of silence. If you could please join me, we'll stand for a moment of silence, after which we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We'll invite Thomas Gavlin, a Boy Scout, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thomas, if you'd like to come up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this rule of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Thomas. Tonight, we have one award recognition that we'd like to let the public know about, and I'm going to turn some time over to Councilmember Luna. Councilmember?
Sorry, thank you Vice Mayor Freeman. It's with pleasure that We Run Mesa Youth Running Program was created by Nicole Leba and started on January 17th, which is also Mesa Running Health and Wellness Day. The program has provided an opportunity for kids ages 5 to 18 to participate in a healthy social and physical activity, encouraging camaraderie, self-reliance and confidence, as well as self-discipline within a supportive setting. Nicole Leba submitted the nomination for the City of Mesa to be considered a running-friendly community. This designation was based on the City of Mesa's infrastructure, along with its local government, businesses, and community support in providing a safe and friendly running environment. The City of Mesa is one of 11 running-friendly communities in the United States. Nicole is here tonight to present the designation to the City of Mesa. So Nicole, come on forward.
Vice Mayor Freeman, Council, thank you so much for having us here tonight. From a casual conversation with friend and fellow Mesa Parks and Rec Board Member Joe Martin, the seed for We Run Mesa Youth Running Program was planted. It then began to grow with the support of Director of Mesa Parks and Rec Mark Hirschberg and Mesa Police Chief Ramon Batista. We've Run Mesa then bloomed when I was joined by Mesa Police Officers Lieutenant John Woodard, Lieutenant Diana Williams, Commander Mike Bellows, Sergeant Rob Sheehan, Detective Greg Catone, Officer Kent Green, and Police Community Partnership Administrator Tara Hall. Together, as a team, we have created an amazing community running program for the youth in Mesa. Support and contributors for the We Run Mesa Youth Running Program include Councilmember David Luna, Councilmember Jennifer Duff, Councilmember Francisco Heredia, City of Mesa Parks and Rec, and all staff members from Eagles Community Center, City of Mesa Police Department, Mesa Police Association, Mesa Fire, East Valley Mesa Fire Charities, City of Mesa Transportation, Mesa Counts on College, Mesa Phoenix Marathon, Borrow's Pizza, Awesome Bottles, Sprouts Local Grocery Store, Phil Austin Law, East Valley Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and my husband Levi Leva. It is from this support that we have proven running unites people, it builds bridges in communities, and therefore, the City of Mesa is, in fact, a running-friendly community. Here's Jennifer to present designation.
On behalf of We Run Mesa, we would like to present Council and Director of Parks and Rec, Mark Hirschberg, the Running Friendly Community Designation Award by the Road Runners Club of America.
Thank you very much. Council, you want to join us? We'll go down and have a picture. Mr. Hirschberg?
Good job, guys.
Good job, guys.
Good job.
Thank you, Nicole, for your leadership and efforts on this. Very much appreciated. With that, we'll move forward with our consent agenda. Mr. Christopher?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. These are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the City Council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. If a citizen wants an item removed, a blue card must be completed and given to the city clerk prior to the council's vote on the consent agenda. Item 2 approval of minutes of previous meetings as written. Item 3A, act on liquor license application for Blue Thunder Law Enforcement Motorcycle Club, one-day event, May 16th, 922 South Country Club Drive. Item 3B, act on liquor license application for Longbow Golf Club, 5601 East Longbow Parkway. Item 3C, act on liquor license application for Safeway, 4316 South Signal Bude Road. Item 3D, act on liquor license application for Safeway, 4264 South Signal Bude Road. Item 3E, act on liquor license application for Sprouts Farmers Market, 1240 South Signal Bude Road. Item 3F, act on liquor license application for Longbow Golf Club, 5601 East Longbow Parkway. Item 4A, act on three-year term contract for cabling services with two years of renewal options for citywide departments. Item 4B, act on liquor license application to purchase one replacement Chevrolet Tahoe for the police department. Item 4C, act on two-month extension, dollar limit increase to the term contract for emergency medical supplies for the Mesa Fire and Medical Department. Item 4D, act on one-year renewal with a one-year renewal option to the term contract for large-format commercial printing for the Business Services Department. Item 4E, act on one-year renewal of the term contract for off-site vehicle washing for various city departments as requested by the Business Services Department. Item 4F, act on amendment to the term contract for contractor building maintenance services as requested by the Parks Recreation and Community Facilities Department. Item 4G, act on three-month term contract with three years of renewal options for athletic court servicing for the Parks Recreation and Community Facilities Department. Item 4H, act on 10-year term contract with two five-year renewal options for management services at the Dobson Ranch Golf Course for the Parks Recreation and Community Facilities Department. Item 4I, act on one-year renewal with a one-year renewal option to the term contract for traffic count services for the Transportation Department. Item 4J, act on one-year renewal of the term contract for traffic signal control cabinets for the Materials and Supply Warehouse for the Transportation Department. Item 4K, act on one-year renewal with a one-year renewal option to the term contract for annodalous service risers for the Materials and Supply Warehouse for the Energy Resources Department. Item 4L, act on dollar limit increase to year four and one-year renewal for year five of the term contract for deep well and well pump maintenance and repair services for the Water Resources Department. Item 5A, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Maricopa Association of Governments for a design assistance grant for the Mesa Gateway Shared Use Pathway Phase III Project. The city shares 20% of the cost, MAG will cover the remaining 80%. Item 5B, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa Association of Governments for a design assistance grant for the US-60 Pathway Consolidated Canal to Eastern Canal Pathways Project. The city shares 20% of the cost, MAG will cover the remaining 80%. Item 5C, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a project agreement with Maricopa Association of Governments for an arterial life cycle program project on Broadway Road between Mesa Drive, Les Swoer, and Stapley Drive that defines the regional reimbursement schedule for the project. Item 5D, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a sub-recipient agreement with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security to accept grant funds to purchase portable vehicle barricades and trailers for the Police Department's Programs and Events Division. Item 5E, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into the First Amendment to the amended and restated lease agreement with Mesa Golf Incorporated of the property located at 1415 Southwestwood. The First Amendment allows for additional uses of the property to include soccer and other athletic-type uses, and extends the term of the amended and restated lease for an additional 25 years. Item 5F, act on resolution approving the purchase of and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with terms of up to three years for a firm electric power supply and associated energy of up to 11 megawatts varying monthly, with final average pricing of not greater than $60 per megawatt hour. Item 6A, introduction of ordinance amending Sections 10-4-3 through 10-4-6 of the Mesa City Code to modify the boundaries of the current 35 miles per hour speed limit on Main Street from Mesa Drive to Gilbert Road, to rescind the current 40 miles per hour speed limit on Main Street from 1.53 feet west of South Allen Street to 1.211 feet east of Gilbert Road, and to correctly reflect existing boundaries of the current 45 and 30 miles per hour speed limits on Main Street between Centennial Way, Surine, and Gilbert Road, as recommended by the Transportation Advisory Board. Item 6B, introduction of ordinance regarding ANX-18-00502 annexing property located north of Ray Road, east of Power Road. Item 6C, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON-18-00775 within the 4,900 to 5,200 blocks of South Power Road, located south of the 202 Santana Freeway on the east side of Power Road and north of Ray Road. Rezone, council use permit, and site plan review to allow for a mixed-use development. Item 6D, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON-18-00066, the 1,000 through 1,100 blocks of South Alma School and the 1,200 through 1,300 blocks of West Southern Avenue, located at the northwest corner of Alma School Road and Southern Avenue. Rezone and site plan review to allow for development of multi-residential and commercial uses. Item 7A, act on ordinance regarding ZON-18-00984 within the 700 block of South Stapley Drive and the 1,200 block of East Eighth Avenue, located south of Broadway and the east side of Stapley. Rezone and site plan review to allow for commercial development. Item 7B has been removed from the consent agenda. Item 7C, act on ordinance regarding ZON-19-00070 within the 8,000 block of East Ray Road, located west of Hawes Road and the north side of Ray Road. Rezone and site plan review to allow for an industrial development. Item 7D, act on ordinance regarding ZON-18-00806 within the 3,100 to 3,400 blocks of South Ellsworth Road, located north of Elliott Road and the west side of Ellsworth. Rezone, site plan review, and a special use permit for a reduction in parking. This request will allow for an industrial development. Item 8A, act on subdivision plat, Cadence at Gateway Phase II, Parcel K, within the 9,500 through 9,600 blocks of the East Toledo Avenue Alignment on the south side, located south and east of Ellsworth and Ray Roads within the Cadence at Gateway Community. Item 8B, act on subdivision plat, Cadence at Gateway Phase II, Parcel L, within the 9,700 block of the East Cadence Parkway Alignment on the west side, located south and east of Ellsworth and Ray Roads within the Cadence at Gateway Community. And Item 8C, act on subdivision plat, Cadence at Gateway Phase II, Parcel N, within the 9,800 block of the East Williams Field Alignment on the north side, located south and east of Ellsworth and Ray Roads within the Cadence at Gateway Community. Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. Ms. Mickelson, is there anyone to pull a blue card? All right, thank you. Okay, with that, we have a motion by Mr. Luna and a second by Mr. Heredia. Please cast your vote. Okay. It's aye, all in favor, with the mayor and Councilmember Thompson absent. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to now go to 7B to discuss that, and go back to that one here. 7B, 19-0414 zoning case 18-00980. That's the 2,600 block of North Power Road located on the south McDowell Road, east side of Power, 10.43 acre, plus or minus zoning. So with that, I have three blue cards on the item, and two wish to speak, and one, Elizabeth Kemmer chooses not to speak, but she's opposed to this. With that, we'll move forward with the speakers. First, we'll hear from Donald Douglas, and followed by Melissa McCormick. Mr. Douglas, you have three minutes, and state your address, please, and name. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. My name is Don Douglas. I reside at 6713 East Manning Street in Mesa. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I do want to talk about the Springs at Mesa. We do have a lot of concerns about the traffic flow there. You've got, starting with LA Fitness, which their parking lot is going to be the main entrance into this development of 196 units, which we're estimating about 400 vehicles will be added to the neighborhood. Starting at LA Fitness and going north toward McDowell Road, there are seven entrances and exits out of businesses there. People currently in morning rush hour and evening rush hour still have a hard time getting in and out of there. But with morning rush hour, with 400 vehicles in that development, granted, not everybody's going to be going to work at the same time. Morning rush hour could be an hour, an hour and a half long, but you've got 400 vehicles scattered over that timeframe, trying to come out of that one parking lot on the Power Road, which at that time is also going to be in rush hour traffic. Plus, you've got people coming into LA Fitness at the same time. It's going to be very hard for those people to get out of that development during rush hour traffic in the morning. What worries a lot of us is the evening rush hour traffic. They're coming southbound, a lot of people coming off of 202, going to make a left-hand turn through the left-hand lane on southbound Power. That left-hand turn lane only holds three cars maximum. Now, granted, not everybody's coming home at the same time, not everybody's going to LA Fitness at the same time. According to one of the managers at LA Fitness, that is one of their times they get a lot of customers in, is coming home from work. What's the chances of having more than three cars wanting to turn left at the same time? It's pretty high with, you know, 400 vehicles there, not everybody coming home at the same time. But there's a high possibility there's going to be more than three cars wanting to make a left-hand turn. If there is, there's going to be people setting in the traffic lane on southbound Power. That's going to impede the flow of traffic. Granted, the road can handle flow, but if you put a cork in that flow because people need to make a left-hand turn to go home or go to LA Fitness, that impedes your traffic flow. Stuff like that increases the chance for accidents. Stuff with the increase of problems like that in the area, there's a lot of us concerned about that's going to have a trickle-down effect on our property values as well. But right now, the biggest concern is impeding the flow of traffic there. I don't know how many of you actually went out and looked at the site. It's sort of landlocked the whole way around. There's business-
Mr. Douglas, you just have a few seconds. Your three minutes is up.
The other thing I'd like to bring out is there is a possibility we could look into putting a road out the back end of the property, running along the canal to Power to Brown Road. It's something to look into, because when you're looking at the back of that development, it's on the on-ramp to 202. At the end of that on-ramp starts the off-ramp to Brown Road. Actually, I don't think, yeah, it's one straight shot right up through there. There is no area where it stops. If it's that close, couldn't there be a road, could we look at putting a road that way from the back of that development, straight up to Brown Road? Residents would have immediate access to the 202, and the same access going down Brown Road and coming out on Power.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Your comments.
Thank you.
You bet. Melissa McCormick, are you still here? Thank you, come forward.
Thank you, I'm Melissa McCormick. I live at 2551 North Silverado. I live straight across from LA Fitness. Now, there is an entrance from our development, straight across, that can go north on Power. But the problem is, is there's no entrance into LA Fitness right at that road. Now, our community goes out of that direction to go north on Power to get to the freeway, which is very difficult at the best of times. The exit that is at LA Fitness is on the north side of the building. So, that is the only area where the cars are going to be coming and going for this development, is the north side of LA Fitness. And like Mr. Douglas said, the southbound lane is going to be turning in into that little bitty area, and all the vehicles are going to back up going up towards McDowell area. The other problems are, is the area where Albertson's and all those restaurants are. When you turn out of there and you want to come back to our community, you have to do the same thing. You have to make that little U-turn on one of those little half roads and come back that direction. There's going to be a lot of U-turns going on, and we're concerned that there might be an accident at one of those areas with the vehicles coming and going. LA Fitness is open early, they're open late, and I think they open like 5:00 in the morning and they close like between 9:00 and 10:00. That parking lot is full. I live there all day long, I see it. They come and go out of there, and the speeds vary. I mean, some look and some don't. And the same with our community. People come out of our parking area, some do it, you know, carefully, and some just shoot out of there. I am just so concerned if you add 400 vehicles, like the list says, but not everybody has one vehicle. Same with our community. You put bedrooms of one, two, three bedrooms in those apartments, they can have multiple vehicles. So you're going to have more than 400 vehicles in that community coming through LA Fitness' parking lot that is already jammed full of vehicles. So that's my concern is, what's going to happen right there? Plus, they have bus stops, one at McDowell, one next to me on Melrose and Power. These buses are going to be on the right side of the road. The tournay lane's going to be on the left side of the road. These are going to be conflicting areas, and you're going to have just a straight lane to go down if you want to go straight down south on Power.
Ms. McCormick, your time's up, but if you want to wrap it up, please do.
Oh, I'm done, thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Appreciate it.
With that, that's the blue cards that I have. Well, there's two more coming. Do you wish to speak, or?
I do.
Okay. Let's read your name and address, please. Krista Hampton?
That would be me.
Okay. State your name and address, please.
My name is Krista Hampton, and I'm at 2625 North Silverado. I live right down the street from my neighbors. I am very, very concerned about the safety of the entire Power Road from McDowell to Hermosavista. I used to walk to the corner to go get Golden Spoon, and now I'm too afraid to walk out on Power Road. And I sit out on my patio, my house backs up to Power Road, and I sit out there and I read my magazine, enjoy my dog, maybe have a beer, I don't know. But I'm worried, because I hear those cars go by, I hear the radios, I hear the speeds that they're going, and I'm afraid they're going to come through my brick wall. And this has been ever since LA Fitness went in, because nobody knows, all they do is go around and make U-turns and impede traffic. There are people trying to turn left into LA Fitness with no turn lane. They turn from the left-hand lane. There's no turn lane. They're not even obeying the laws. And I'm, actually, we had a fatality right there at North Ridge and Power Road last summer. The helicopter landed, and there was a fatality right there. The accidents that happened right there on that corner that I pass by twice a day, every day, or more, have increased tenfold by that new whole strip of the goodwill coming in to LA Fitness. It is scary. I'm afraid to actually walk outside of my neighborhood, and that's ridiculous. I love Mesa. I love walking, but I will not go anywhere near that side of the highway. Do I have any more time left? Just the noise involved is just absolutely ridiculous, and I'm so afraid that it's going to be too crowded, and there's, if they put a light there, maybe that's, that would be better. Maybe that would be better, if they blocked off that, but because it's not blocked off, they think every space, they can turn left, but they need an actual left-hand turn lane. It's very scary. It's very, very scary, and I'm afraid for our children, because there's bus stops right at North Ridge and Silverado, there's a bus stop. I'm worried about those kids getting off, and what do they need to do? And I see people actually illegally crossing the street there. That scares me even more, because people won't walk down to McDowell, they'll just cross right there. We have a whole community of people who actually use all of that area, and I'm just afraid, I'm afraid for people's safety. That's all.
Thank you so much. Okay, our next person would be Josh Demet. Josh, if you'll come forward, and while he's coming forward for the record, Mary Tousenek, Tousin, she wishes not to speak, but she's opposed to it. Okay, Josh, you have-
Yeah, it's Josh Demelt. I'm, I live on 2631 North Silverado. Just like my neighbor mentioned, we have noise issues. We've had multiple wrecks, myself included. One part of that area that's actually kind of in the negative for people passing across going from the east side going west to head north on Power Road, there is the sunlight that comes in during the morning, so there's also that, that has to be attested to. Also, we did have that very horrific accident previously. On top of that, we have the bus road, the bus route that's traveling that way, there's people that their trash is getting all over the place, you know, there's not receptacles there. That's also getting all over in the back of our yards. The other part is, my commute is roughly 30 to 45 minutes, and with additional 400 to possibly 1,200 additional vehicles, that commute is going to be now an hour, if not more. And currently now, I no longer take a route outside to make a left turn going north on Power Road from, I believe, North Ridge. I actually go south North Ridge and then hit the McDowell Road and head south that way, or head west that way. That's also, I mean, because I can't make that left turn. Last Easter, we went to have, my neighbors and I went to go to Easter dinner, and we almost got in an accident there because there's so much traffic that's going northbound on Power Road. And there's, either we need lights, we need more roads, we need to broaden that road so that we can have more space. There's also, now that we're adding this influx of more people in that vicinity, the property taxes they're going to reduce, apartment complex, I did research on that to see if just low-income or even high-income apartment complexes, it reduces our property value considerably. And that's very important to me. I'm from, you know, small town in Nebraska, and, you know, if property values- if property values were reduced, then all my investment that I make into my current home is not going to be available to, for me to either move or to pay off student loans, pay off my current bills and stuff like that. But really, it's, I mean, we have all these kids and the fact that they run and they run, you know, for a good cause, it's not going to be safe for them to run. And I think we want that as a community. We want to keep that safety within our community so that way our kids can grow and improve themselves. But if we add this facility, it's going to really hamper their ability to, you know, run, you know, out on the road, bike even. That's another danger. We have so many cyclists. I haven't seen a cyclist in a long time that takes that McDowell Road going south.
Josh, if you want to summarize your comments.
Long story, I'm not for it. It's, I do see the reason why we want to do it, but there's so many negative aspects of it that I don't believe that it's going to be beneficial for our community.
Thank you, Josh, for your time.
Thank you.
You bet. So, with that, pardon? Oh, yeah, yeah. So, thank you for all the comments. We're going to, we've got some staff here to help go through this process. So, we'll first turn to the applicant. Mr. Anderson, would you like to address first?
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Reese Anderson. My address is 1744 South Val Vista, number 217 here in Mesa. Always a pleasure to be in front of you and share some thoughts. Also with me this evening is Mr. Eric Gumm and Melissa Wilikowski from Continental Properties, they're the applicant on this site. I'm going to, I've got a PowerPoint presentation. It's brief, just maybe a dozen slides, but I think it might help educate all of us here a little bit on traffic and the issue. So, I'd like, with your permission, Mr. Vice Mayor, to focus just on a little bit of the history of the site and then some traffic numbers as that seems to be the main focus of concern from our friends, which, if you listen to them, they are all on the west side of Power Road. And we've spoken with them before, had good conversations. We're glad they're here to share their views. The first site I want to slide that I'd like to show you is the current zoning on this property. It's RM3, residential multifamily, 3 designating that. It's a medium-density multifamily. We're below that maximum density threshold. If you look closely, you can see those underlying lines of the buildings that were approved in 2005. So, this site has been zoned RM3 P A D since 2005. Tonight, our request is to rezone this property from RM3 P A D to RM3 P A D. And you may say, well, why are we doing that? Well, that's because along the eastern edge where that's the canal, remember, this is the CAP canal. It's not SRP, this is CAP. And that's important when we come back to that point, is because we're just modifying some of the setbacks there so that the landscape buffer is adjusted slightly, not much, but just slightly. And that's the reason for that. There's no other deviations to the development standards for a typical RM3 project. Now, we've had two neighborhood meetings. The first one, we had September 5th of last year. This was the site plan we showed. 196 units, we had nine buildings. And you can see there the setback along the southern edge and where we had the buildings placed. When we listened to those neighbors who wanted a larger setback, some more landscaping, and reduce those numbers, so we came back and said, look, we can do this with the same amount of units, but in three-story buildings. And so, that's the one we showed in our October neighborhood meeting. Well, we got additional feedback and we made additional changes. And so, now, buildings 3, 4, and 5 are two-story. The others are three. And remember, the buildings that were approved in 2005 were all three-story. So, what we've done is worked hard to minimize height, increase landscaping and setbacks along that southern boundary. And we think we've done that very well. I just want to take a time just to look here for a second. You can see the LA Fitness there. That's the building with the white roof. And then, our main entrance is along that northern boundary. Now, yes, we will have cars that enter this site through the LA Fitness parking lot. That's by design. That's how it's existed and planned since 2005. So, we're not increasing the number of curb cuts or driveways along Power Road. We're not adding driveways. This is taking advantage of what's there today. We can see that there's a secondary access point for fire and emergency only along the northern edge, right above Building 7. And that empties out into the back of the Albertson Shopping Center. Again, that's there for fire and emergency access only. It's not meant to be a secondary or alternative access point. On that note, why I mentioned that the CAP designation is a careful one. If you think about the great canals we had, and earlier tonight on your agenda, you had some projects to improve canals, didn't you? I know there's one right behind my house. You know, most of you know where I live at, Lindsay &amp; Brown. And I'm looking forward to those improvements being made. But here, folks don't even enjoy the ability to walk along these banks. They are locked down, locked tight. You can't even walk back there. So, while I appreciate the idea of putting a road along that canal over to the 202 or down to Brown Road, that would take an act of Congress, literally. It's just not going to happen. So, our community outreach, September 5th, our first meeting. October, we had another one. In February, we had additional follow-up. We've even placed calls to some of the people in this room tonight over the last few days. And we're always open and willing to talk. But we think we've done quite a bit of community outreach. Now, to really understand the traffic issues, I'm going to show you some pages from your own 2040 general plan. And this is where it's going to get technical. Now, if I mess it up, Sabine Ellis, your traffic engineer, is going to correct me, okay? So, if that happens, let me do my best. I'm going to try and play traffic engineer on the weekend. Here we go. So, this is, there's our site, right there. We're zooming in. That 25 that you see just to the left of the red arrow represents 25,000 cars a day going in this section of Power Road. Now, let me draw your attention to McDowell where you can see a 12 and a 15. So, those are the cars coming east and west. Now, this is the level of service. This is the grade we give roads. They come in A, B, C, D, E, and F. A, B, and C are good. D and E, F, right, not as good, just like, just like school. So, here's zooming in. You can see we've got Bs and Cs right there at the intersection. Again, these are the 2012 maps. An important thing to know about this, with these maps here in 2012, when the general plan was done, this site was zoned. It was zoned RM3. So, these traffic counts, the, what's needed in the area was already taken into account with these, with these traffic counts and these maps. Here's the PM. Now, here's the 2040. And we're going to zoom in on it. Again, let me draw your attention to the 25. Isn't that interesting? It's staying the same. But look at the 15 and the 18 on McDowell Road. That's where it's increased. And again, so this is now a slide comparing 2012 to 2040. Again, you can see right there in that segment, we're staying at the same at 25, but the east and west is increasing. And why is that important? Because you can see now that the levels of service have changed. Yes, but it's, but the key is, it's changing for reasons other than this project. It's not changing because of this project. Again, zooming in here so you can see a little bit closer. This is again the PMs. So, this is the last slide I'll leave you with here, but I think it's very instructive, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. This site is vacant today. Again, zoned in 2005 and we are working to bring it back and put a good use on it, consistent with its underlying zoning. The request or the argument to say, you can't allow anything to happen here, is to extend that all the way out, is to say, you can't allow anything to be built here. So, you must ask the alternative question. What would be a fair alternative use here? Well, if we did office, you look at total daily trips. And that's how in the ITE manual, the traffic engineer's world, measure things. Not by the pure fact number of cars, but by trips. So, we're going to use that as our standard of measurement. So, you've got 950 there. But look at the AM peak hours, right? So, then the AM busiest part of the morning, you've got 111 cars coming and going if you had an office use there. In the night, you've got 103 coming and going. The next line down in the light gray is us, the Springs at Red Mountain. Again, our trips are up a little bit more, but that's because in a residential use, they're metering out at different times. Look at, look at our total peak AM, we're less than what an office would be. Look at the evening, only three higher. Now, I don't think an office use is going to happen there, so I don't think that's realistic. You go to a charter school, right? Suddenly, look at the trips, AM 5:20 and evening 1:40, right? And that's because most time when we're picking up students, it's a little bit on the shaded to the early side of the peak PM hour. But you can imagine what that would be, same as the morning. Well, if you went to a retail shopping center there, again, you can see the total trips now are 5,500. Now, in the PM or the AM, 197 total, and the PM 503. My, I guess my point in showing you this slide and this data is just to say, this is a reasonable use. It's been that way for 2005. And to start to think of alternative uses that would happen there, you get either the same or a worse situation. So, we think this is actually a fair request to have in front of you tonight. I know that your planning director, Nana Opia, can answer questions. Sabine Ellis is here can answer questions too. And if I said something wrong, I hope they correct me because we want to make sure you have accurate information. But, Mr. Vice Mayor, if there's any other questions you or other members have, please let us know. We'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. We'll call you back up if needed. With that, I'll open it for council discussion. Councilmember Luna, this is in your district. Would you like to make some comments?
Yes, Vice Mayor Freeman, I was wondering if our planning and zoning director could speak to planning and zoning, how they voted for this item?
Vice Mayor Freeman, members of the council, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this case on March 20th and they voted anonymously for approval, to recommend approval before you.
Okay. I was also wondering if maybe, if you could come forward, Sabine Ellis, and talk about the, what I have found, what I've discovered, I've gotten 12 B-bales relative to this situation in all centers on traffic. The residents across the street from this development are concerned about the traffic flows. And so, give me your rationale and your feelings relative to the traffic and their, and their concerns about that.
Absolutely. Again, I'm Sabine Ellis. I'm the City Traffic Engineer, Vice Mayor Freeman, Councilmember Luna, and the rest of the council. As far as traffic is concerned, I know there were a lot of issues raised here on the first tone-in on the southbound left turns into the LA Fitness that was mentioned to only be able to store three cars when people coming from the freeway to enter the proposed property. That southbound left turn is actually about 170 feet long and can store about eight cars, not three, which is a big difference, obviously. And in observing traffic last Thursday in the PM peak, I didn't see any backup in that left turn-in as it was. I observed it last Thursday for two hours from 3:30 to 5:30. Now, there's only one day. Obviously, I'm not there every day, all day, but I just kind of did a spot check to see what we're dealing with, with current conditions, to see if there maybe is something concerned that needs to be raised at this point. And personally, I didn't see anything when I was looking. Also, generally speaking, Power Road is at about half of its capacity. It has three lanes in each direction, so it's fully built out and it can carry more traffic. Can get more congested, obviously, without, it was still flowing well with the traffic. The advantage of the neighborhood on the west side of Power Road is that they have several ways in and out of the neighborhood for those times that it may be difficult to make an eastbound left turn. For instance, at North Ridge that was mentioned earlier, or Melrose, they do have a traffic signal at Hermosoa Vista. And then also, they can go out north on McDowell via Ricardo or 64th Street. I think one of the residents mentioned earlier that that's what they do, knowing that they have a hard time making a left turn out of the neighborhood. And then, the intersection itself of McDowell and Power, we have currently single left turn lanes in all directions. So, if traffic increases and it's needed, we can make those dual left turn lanes without too much of an effort. So, we can review traffic volumes going forward and see if that's something we need to do based on the traffic volumes.
So, Sabine, I was wondering if it would be possible that you meet with some of the residents to talk about some traffic mitigation potential? I know Krista Hampton spoke about potential traffic light in the area to see if there's a need for that. But, you know, I would, I would ask that you work with the residents because their issue is all traffic-related. They're concerned about the amount of traffic going in and out of the development, as well as LA Fitness, the traffic flow going north and south of the Power Road. I want to support the project, but I'm also concerned about the traffic situation there. And so, I would ask if it would be possible for you to meet with the residents, come up with some solution and provide some mitigation efforts, if that's a possibility.
Sure, I'll be happy to.
So, on that, I'm going to?
Can I make a?
Yes, go ahead.
Sabine, I was just looking at, is there a middle island there, divider island in the roadway?
There is a raised median along Power Road. Correct, yes, with various entrances to the properties to the east and west.
I know on Power, just south of McKellips, there's a signalized light at an intersection there. I don't know, remember the street segment there. But is that possible? A signalized light be here for this, this rationale for that? Yes or no?
For this development itself, for just their entrance, it's going to be difficult based on how the other driveways in North Ridge line up. We would have to look at what makes sense there. And that's something we can take a look at based on current traffic volumes. I am not sure if it meets as we have it, but we can certainly take a look and see what would, would help.
Had you looked at that before, possibly, a signalization there?
We have not. We have the Hermosoa Vista traffic signal and in-between, it's somewhat difficult due to the many driveways that we have and not trying to hinder access to other driveways when we build a signal at one location.
I think just adding to councilmember Luna's concern, if that can be looked at and brought into the mix, appreciate that.
Yeah, for sure.
A councilmember? You were going to say something? And the councilmember, any comments?
I just have a couple of questions, if it's okay now. Would it be a consideration to reduce the speed limit there to make it safer for this, you know, more traffic? Or does it justify it at this point?
At this point, from what I know, it's justified. I'm not sure exactly what the safety concerns are. We looked at crashes between North Ridge and Melrose along the corridor and we hadn't had any since October of 2018, which is great. There have been a few in the past. I'm not aware of the specific fatality. I will need to look into that. So, we can take a look. I just don't know exactly what would justify lowering the speed limit and we haven't even taken any speed counts. So, currently, I'm not aware of what we're dealing with. Is there really a speeding issue? Is it occasional, which happens, you know, anywhere, really? But we can certainly take speed counts and see what we're dealing with currently. I'll look at the crashes and the fatality that was mentioned. Somebody mentioned before, and I can't remember exactly who it was with the emails we've gotten, but somebody mentioned southbound left turns at North Ridge because obviously, the neighborhood, that's where a lot of them go out. There's not a southbound left turn-in, so left turns, southbound left turns are actually prohibited, as well as U-turns. So, if there is an issue due to development with U-turns in the future, we can certainly have enforcement go out there and, again, take a look and see if there's U-turns being made where it's not allowed. Because wherever we don't have a southbound left turn lane, we don't want people turning from the perceived fast lane to make a turn. We will only want them to do that when there's actually a left turn-in so they can get out of the fast lane. So, there are a few signs out there you'll see where U-turns and left turns are not allowed because of that.
I just wanted to, you know, not suggest, you know, at this, right now, that there is speed limit reduction, but more getting to the point of, are there alternatives, given if there are serious increases that are hampering, you know, unsafe? Do we have, are there provisions that could be made to accommodate more traffic if it was needed at the time and the numbers, you know, justified it?
Yeah, the roadway as it is can accommodate about double the traffic based on its design. It's fully built out, like I said. And some other comparative roadways in Mesa have about double the traffic and still function. Granted, congestion, obviously, because there are more vehicles on the road, but it's still designed to flow well.
Yeah, I just know as a city, our number one concern would be safety. So, to accommodate and flex as needed. And do we keep traffic counts on the roads, you know, annually?
Yes, we do.
Do we have more recent than 2012?
Yeah, we do. We count half of the city every other year. So, basically, every two years, we count the whole city, only because of the amount. But we count all the materials and major collectors regularly. So, we have updated counts on that. They're fairly similar still, based on 2012.
So, the 2012 numbers are holding?
Correct.
And the, in 2040, I assume that those are also anticipated on the build-out per the zoning that was assigned to the properties?
Exactly. That does take into consideration what was previously zoned, which would be what was talked about on the 2005 development, which had a little bit less units, but comparable to what's proposed today. to what's proposed today.
Okay. Well, thank you, and thank you for the many emails that everybody sent to council. I appreciate the input and being active in your community. I am in support of the project. I know it's difficult to have more traffic in your neighborhood and around. It is part of what a city does, is more and more development, and as long as we are responsible as a city, to keep our residents and the traffic as safe as possible as we grow, I'm in support of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabine. Any other council comments? All right. I'll entertain a motion, Dan.
I move that we approve 7B.
Is there a second? You want to push your move?
I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
Does it show?
It does. So councilmember Luna has made a motion, and councilmember Duff second it. Please vote. The votes are in favor. Ayes with the mayor and councilmember Thompson absent. Thank you for your time. We'll move forward now to item 9A, where we'll conduct a public hearing to release a petition for signatures for annexation case 18-00502.
Thank you.
And I declare the public hearing open. Ms. Mickelson, are there any one that wishes to speak on this item? Okay. Do any councilmembers wish to speak on it? Then I do hereby call the public hearing closed. There's no action on this item. This annexation will come back to council in the future, so council will be meeting to vote on the annexation of this property. Also, 9B, item 9B, conduct a public hearing to release the petition for signatures for annexation case 19-00066 for approximately 13 acres located north of University Drive and west of Ellsworth Road. I declare the public hearing open. Ms. Mickelson, is there anyone who wishes to speak? Okay. With that, any councilmembers wish to speak? Then I declare the public hearing closed, and again, there's no action on this. So thank you very much. With that, we'll move forward to items from citizens present. We have two blue cards. We'll hear first from Verl Farnsworth. Mr. Farnsworth, you'd like to come forward and state, I think you've been here, so, you know.
Vice Mayor, council, Verl Farnsworth. I understand that when I last spoke to this council and administration that I ruffled a few feathers. I want you to know that I clearly intended to do that. Can you imagine that some people are offended when they don't tell the truth and others find out? When I was a young boy, if you told a lie, everybody would run around and say, liar, liar, pants on fire. That little statement had a dramatic positive effect on those who wanted to tell lies. I've been speaking before this council for the last 16 months, and I've used the more messagable words like misspoke, or need to change, or revisit, or reconsider, or conflict of interest. All of those times, those words have fallen on deaf ears. Nothing said, or in the manner said, has had any effect on correcting the outlandish behavior of this council. If you would review the January 7th study session, you will conclude that it is I that should be offended, as by your silence and omission of correction of those who knew, who were many, who did not correct the misstatement that a $25.5 million appraisal had never been produced. Bigger and more concerning than that misstatement is why and how could such a statement ever have been made? Why would a person risk their job making such an obvious blunder? Why would the many who knew that the answer was not correct fear to speak up? I fear that there is a culture present that is casting a cloud over the expected transparency and open operations of this city. I fear the worst. Too many have forgotten that this city belongs to the citizens, not to our elected officials or to the staff. You are the public servants, all of you. You're not our masters. So again, I'm asking you respectfully to reverse the direction that you're going and return our park land back to the confines of the residents, and never try to make such a decision in the future again without consulting the citizens of this city to whom ownership rightly belongs. I applaud the mayor on his affirmation of extreme transparency to the minute detail as stated this past Thursday in the study session. That statement is under test right now, as I've made a request for information that's two weeks old, that should have been as easy to transmit as opening the file and copying its contents. I hope that the option to be blunt will not be needed, but if it is, such as with this issue, you can expect that the truth will not hide behind the walls of deception and lies.
Mr. Farnsworth, your time's up.
Call me a rabble-razzer, label me an extremist if you choose, but I want you to know that I'm motivated by the citizen's right to know the truth about what is happening in their city government. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farnsworth. Well, next here from Heather Neese, if you can come forward, if you're here, and you have three minutes, and state your name and address. Thank you.
My name is Heather Neese. I live at 7262 East Mill Street, Mesa, Arizona. I have come to address this governing body regarding your blatant disregard of the unconstitutional suppression of free speech by AC Burlingame and Commander Beaton. We are tired of living under the fear of unrelenting vindictive and retaliatory command of Batista Burlingame and Beaton. August 9th, 2018, in a mandatory meeting, Burlingame willfully and maliciously suppressed the constitutional right of free speech for the wives and spouses of the entire Special Operations Unit. She ordered team members to go home and tell their wives or spouses to keep their mouths shut on social media about the chief and department politics. No one, especially another woman who takes orders from a coward, has the right to tell us to shut our mouths in any arena. Burlingame ensured the obedience and follow-through of this violation of the Constitution by stating clearly that team members would be punished at work for their wives' verbal or written opinions and thoughts about the chief and his politics in public forums by removal from their position on, or the complete dismemberment of a vital unit in the police department. Beaton stood and condoned her every word and added that the team was an embarrassment. December 17th, I requested a meeting with Burlingame and Beaton to give them the opportunity to explain their actions of civil rights violations and direct workplace hostility. It was suggested I go directly to the chief. Batista denied the meeting. December 28th, I sent an email to Mr. Pombier, whose response took less than 45 minutes. December 30th, I sent an email to Merrick Giles, whom to this day remains unresponsive. January 7th, I met with Mr. Pombier in person and expressed my thoughts and concerns about these issues and why an investigation was not in process. Why had Batista, who was fully aware of these issues, not done his job of supervising his direct subordinate? Mr. Pombier expressed his deep concern about the situation and assured me that it would be addressed. Beaton agreed to meet with me only after I had met with Mr. Pombier. January 16th, I sent another email with the support of five other wives to Mr. Pombier requesting a formal investigation be opened. He shared with the Swiss City Manager, Christopher Brady. January 29th, Mr. Pombier met with SWAT. Nine months have now passed, largely due to your cowardice and pride, while the injustice of civil rights and workplace hostility is still uninvestigated. We sought help from you, who by the very nature and definition of your position should be impartial and fair when presented with evidence of threats and injustices. You have ignored wives and mothers who are being persecuted and suppressed for speaking up in defense of their husbands and others like them. These men stand by, willing to protect you against violence because you are unwilling to do so yourself, yet when they come to you and ask that you do your part and help them, you turn away your faces and close your ears to their righteous cries for justice. How dare you expect blood from our husbands and others like them when you are unwilling to stand up and defend them? At this point, it is understood that you condone, support, and are complicit in the unconstitutional and illegal suppression of our rights to express our thoughts and feelings openly by allowing this chain of command to viciously employ threats, intimidating tactics, and ongoing workplace hostility. It is disgusting that this is the level of your integrity as elected officials, whose purpose is to stand as witnesses and defenders of those constitutional rights. We as constituents demand immediate action to be taken to correct this ongoing problem. Now, no more. We are scared to death. There is one wife, one wife, besides myself in this room, who is daring to stand up and talk for their husband, and the chief of police doesn't give two tittles about it. He's ignored it. He ignored me. You have ignored me. The manager, city manager, has ignored me. You have been presented with evidence time after time and have done nothing to stop this chain of command. They are doing wrong, and you have a responsibility to correct it, to investigate it, and to make sure it does not continue, and that these officers have a right to have their voices heard and to be respected, and not to be forced to live in fear of retaliation from their chain of command that is there to protect and support them.
Thank you, Ms. Neese. Thank you for your comments. With that, council, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. There we have, in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you.